Okay, six oh two, November fourth, meetings follow the word. Pro coffee.
Councilmember Walker.
Here.
Councilmember Sullivan is not present. Councilmember Melo.
Here.
Councilmember Lane.
Here.
Councilmember Conlon.
Here.
Councilmember Gardner.
Here.
I have to remember. Councilmember. And councilmember Michaels.
Here.
If we can all rise to the seat in flag.
Why don't we give just to the flag, the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Anybody here to speak with the floor?
Yes. Yeah. We've got several there.
Mr. Rick McFone.
Good evening. Rick McFone has already announced, you know my name, retired Corland Police Department Detective Lieutenant, has served the city as a police officer for twenty-two years, retiring in two thousand. I wanted to address the common council tonight and the mayor regarding some issues that have come up surrounding retiree health insurance recently. So the subject of health insurance again has come up with some other options being considered. As most of you know, certain city of Corland retirees earn a contractually guaranteed benefit of paid up health insurance for life. They met certain criteria upon retirement. This benefit is contractually guaranteed and is guaranteed to be as good or better than the plan that was in place when we retired. In the last few years, some cost saving plan changes have been suggested by the city. Those changes appeared on their face to be advantageous to both the city and our retirees, saving untold amount, untold amounts of money. But after review, these plans fell short of the as good or better standard guaranteed to us. The majority of our retired members decided not to enroll in them. Now another plan has emerged, and I have to say this new plan appears to have some merit to it. Through an informal meeting and discussion that's taken place. Regarding this health insurance, uh, new option. We've requested a series of informational meetings where our members can ask questions, find out more about the offered plan. And how it compares to our existing Blue Cross Blue Shield Excellis Plan through the Tompkins County Consortium. These meetings have been scheduled, our members have been notified. Honestly, I'm cautiously optimistic based on what I've heard so far that the new plan will be a viable option and a cost saving change from our existing plan. I'm speaking on my behalf specifically on Medicare eligible retirees sixty-five and above. The other folks that are below that age limit have other concerns about some of the health insurance concerns, and I'm going to let them speak to their piece of it. I do want to take the time to remind the mayor, members of the council. That it has already been established in open council sessions and agreed upon by Mayor Steve. That any change to our health insurance plan will be totally voluntary. By our members and it will be an opt-in and not an opt-out decision. Members who voluntarily changed to the new offered plan will have made this decision on their own accord. Members who decide they do not want to change plans will be allowed to maintain enrollment in our existing plan. This is the only fair way to approach this based on contractually guaranteed and earned benefits that we as retirees, uh, receive. A forced changeover would be met with resistance and possible legal action from our members, and that's coming from. Several of our retirees that have voices concerned. I want to thanks, uh, thank you for the privilege and of the floor and your time, and I look forward to the upcoming informational meetings.
Thank you.
Thanks for hanging with us.
Thanks.
Mr. Johnson.
Good evening. My name's Dan Johnson, retired in from the city police department in two thousand and twenty-three. As a detective sergeant, um, I served, I stand here to you today, I'm fifty years old. I just spent half of my life with the city police department. I could have gone to other agencies that paid more, I chose to make Corland my home and serve Corland. Knowing full well that I could have gone to other places, I stayed in Corland. And there was a couple of things I counted on, number one, I counted on my retirement, the pension, number two, health insurance. Those were important to me, they're important to me today. During my tenure, twenty-five years in the police department, we negotiated in good faith with the city. To keep that health insurance, we, you know, raises of one percent, two, three percent were common. There were even years, several years I can remember, we took zeros. Upon retirement, you have to turn. Two hundred and fifty days, sick days over to the city to stay on the health insurance. So it's not something the city necessarily gives you, you buy this privilege, you buy it, bought and paid for. This health insurance, this proposed change, I've heard both good and bad about it, but this is not. What we negotiated for for twenty-five years, we didn't negotiate and take low percentage raises, we weren't getting sixteen, eighteen, twenty percent pay raises. We negotiated low for years even before me to, to keep this health insurance, and when I retired. This is what I turned over those two hundred and fifty days, year salary for, it's what I counted on. A proposed health insurance change not only affects the health insurance. But if the, the, the co-pays, if the co-pays become a negotiated item down the road, it will also affect my pension. And I'm on, I mean, I'm a retiree. If the city police or any other union wants to. Change health insurance policies and reap a benefit from that, I, I'm for that. But I, I hope that they wouldn't shoulder. That burden on the retirees who can no longer negotiate with the city on something that we bought, paid for, negotiated for our entire life, this is not. I didn't, I didn't negotiate for a new plan now. This is something that, you know, if it is as good as the city says it is, if the plan were to become optional. If it's as good as it is, and it saves retirees money, I suspect they're going to want to go to it on their own. Just give us the option to stick with what we have. Thank you for your.
That'd be thanks, yeah.
Thanks, yeah.
Jeff Fitz.
Hello, recent retiree, uh, Coral City Police Department as well, just going to build upon some of the things my fellow retirees just said. I was also P V A president for five, six years and have the privilege of working with current mayor and prior administrations as well, negotiating several contracts. One of which led to an arbitration. Because in fact, we were getting one percent raises for several years, I did have the privilege of starting this agency. When there were a lot of senior officers working above me, right now the department is probably looking at about seventy percent less I knew. Of officers that they have less than five years on, when I got on seventy percent had five, or had more than a decade on. And those officers. During contract negotiations, I was learning about union rights and how to be a union member. Always explained to me like you can't see the numbers in healthcare insurance, but those costs rise, which is also why. Every year we have suggestions to find new healthcare plans because costing rise across the nation and once again. These things are negotiating in good faith and we did and those officers did and retired and myself included. Bought hard to keep the healthcare and we're giving up. Good raises, competitive raises with other agencies, which indeed did make us lose several officers for years. I've heard the prior administration of this common council brag about the fact that they locked us into low raises for years, but those negotiations were not. You know, they, we took low raises, but we kept our healthcare, we negotiated in good faith for that. And to push a healthcare plan on, and that's not what I'm hearing, but if it were to be pushed on us as retirees and prior employees of the city, you know. Once again, that good faith negotiation would be tarnished, um, and would hope to be an optional thing for our retirees, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Morales, did you want to say something, are you good? I saw you come in, so I'm not putting you on the spot.
No, I appreciate the offer, I think off to the bits.
It's good, it's good to see you though.
Good to see you too.
All right, thank you. Anybody else here to speak? Okay, thank you for the balance.
I do have a public comment.
Natalie Birch.
Yes.
Hello, just wanted to make a quick, um, comment of, Natalie Birch, a recent resident of Corland County. I just want to recognize Sergeant Olson, um, for city police for his calm, collected and compassionate approach. A few like on September the nineteenth, like as a new member of the community. For about seven months, I lived with PTSD and I faced challenges throughout, you know, my life and his professionalism and ability. To redirect and handle the situation with patience and understanding meant a great deal to me. His quiet empathy ensured the situation remains safe and respectful, and I think we need more officers like Sergeant Olson in our community. He deserves recognition for his actions that night and, you know, I believe. Just like a lot of people who spoke today, you know, they deserve recognition, I do believe. Law enforcement officials do need more recognitions for the time they do, the, the, the years that they work in the. You know, in law enforcement and everything like that, it's, um. When you, when you see someone who has integrity and he's willing to help you and approach a situation in a different way. That is true community, that is what the community is about, and I just want to, you know, commend him for that. And that, that'll be all, that's all I have to say, nervous talking, I would usually attend in person, but I wasn't going to make it, but thank you.
Well, thank you. I think sharing that with us, we'd like to hear those stories and we'll make sure that's shared with Sergeant Olson, that she is in the background and says, thank you for sharing that, Melissa.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Anybody else? Okay, well, that ended up to some. Finance report.
All right, good evening. Very long, okay. Since I printed this out and sent it along on Friday, uh, the two thousand and twenty-four A F R has been completed and submitted to O S C. So we will now be working with our auditors on two thousand and twenty-four and hope to have that wrapped up for the financials to be done before the end of the year. So we're catching up, so literature. Sales tax collection is up overall, the year two thousand and twenty-five, year to date, we're up about three point nine five percent across the county in Portland, so we're doing well with that. As you're looking at the kind of totals there in the. Little chart that I put in there, um, Q three sales tax, which is about two million, is get accounted for in that. And additionally, our aim payment, which is another little bit better than two million, is not accounted in that, we typically get that in early December. And then obviously we'll still have Q four, which is another two million for sales tax, so although there is a negative number there, we are still. We have certain things that are a little delayed in the year coming in, so with that in mind, I'm feeling that two thousand and twenty-five should come out even roughly overall for the year, so I'm very happy with that. We'll keep an eye on it as we get through the end of the year, but so far it's going well. Um, the budget for two thousand and twenty-six, I wanted to just go through after the budget hearings, the adjustments that I took down as notes and make sure that I had not missed anything, so I wanted to read through these with the council present. So I did decrease line, uh, A seventy-ten, four, two, three, five, fifty, uh, by eighty thousand, due to the anticipated loss of funding from Portlandville, that's the eighty thousand we typically get from them. And then I likewise decreased one of the expense lines proportionally to match that. Uh, so that balances the, the loss across both sides of the budget. I increased the revenue line, uh, that reflects the tax levy by one percent, uh, due to the council's recommendation to go from plan one to plan four. For the post sixty-five retirees, and that was discussed, that that would be probably the tax levy by approximately one percent to do that. Uh, that will match the same plan that the county is offering to their retirees, uh, so it's a, a more robust plan than, than the initial one we had looked at. Uh, decreased line, A fifty-one, forty-two, uh, it's a personnel line and increase the associated overtime line, just as we were looking at numbers. There to, to better reflect what portion of the salary, what was overtime, just as we had discussed about the, uh, various D P W lines being kind of allocated out, so we can better track. Uh, the department workforce there in terms of the different tasks that they're doing. Uh, and I did go through, um, and validate, uh, the salaries that I had used, um, for C S E A and, uh, the wastewater treatment plant personnel. As we're going through the contract negotiations, I, I'm comfortable with where we have those lines currently. So that is everything that I had to incorporate as we were moving to the next. Iteration of the budget, and I just wanted to, to verify with council that there was nothing else that I had missed that had been discussed. So is everybody comfortable with those adjustments?
Yes.
So, uh, I got a question, but all the health insurance, um, the budget is including all the health insurance, all the retirees moving to that plan also, right?
The, the budget reflects moving all active and retired. Personnel to the new plans that have been discussed, so for everybody under the age of sixty-five, both active and retired, that would be to the bronze plan. With the H R A fully funded for both in-network and out-of-network costs, and for everybody who's over sixty-five, that would now be to that plan four, which was that additional one percent for the tax levy. So yes, it does reflect that. Any other questions? Overall, for our I T projects, we are continuing with our tax software upgrade, um, I'm hoping they'll have it live for us here by the end of the month, it's looking good right now, and we are also working to get the credit card processing. Uh, up and running, we're hoping to have that by the end of the year, so we'll actually be able to do swipes. Uh, at the various counters in, in addition to online, just to make that a little more customer friendly for everybody. And then there was a listing of all the brands and capital projects from Toma, as well as the year-to-date full lines of the budget that I had sent out as well, were there any questions with any of those things?
Someone's using the credit card, let's hope so, are they going to be charged an extra percentage for using the code?
Yes, they will.
Something that was anything that way.
Correct.
Okay.
And it's the same as it is currently, if you go online and use your credit card to pay, we have to pass those conditions fees out.
Just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, absolutely. That's all.
Anybody have any questions? Are you going to motion to see them file? Okay, motion, receive and file, and second, I am Miss Lane. Other questions, all of you there?
I got it.
Very.
Thanks, Ben.
No, thank you. And we'll start next year, we'll do it the second meeting in one month rather than trying to cram them with the beginning.
Thank you, I'm grateful.
I want to finish this year that way, so there's one more.
That's all right.
We'll do the second.
The second would be so much nicer, thank you.
Be more accurate for everybody.
That's true.
Okay, so, uh, mayor's report real quick, um, so on the second, I intended to, uh, powering seeing central New York community planning summit, so it was, uh, talking about. Micron is up in Syracuse, talk about Micron, talk about development, talk about zoning and code, we're ahead of a lot of other duties, just about everybody is. Hands above, but there's still, uh, some work that has to be done, and it was very educational and certainly got some ideas, I worked with the I D A B D C, I think next week, to try to deal with some of those. Plans that we had ahead, uh. We did all the Western sessions, we all know, uh, attended the P D graduation for officers Fadowski down in Binghamton. With the chief and deputy chief and Mr. Merton as well, uh, and that, that was great, um, on the twenty-fifth, they had the Corland produce. Had their second annual chicken wing contested, there was, I've never, it was first year, it was twenty, this, it was full, all the park lot all the way down, it was, it was a great event, they're going to have to do something different next year, I think the weeks are about in twenty minutes. So we had to probably charge, trunk and treat on Main Street, about five thousand people, uh, we, we counted how many people were attending that. On, on the road and then these types of, it was, it was quite, quite a group, uh, quite a, quite a thing to do it. Then we had, uh, the country, near, uh, the Country Music Hall of Fame, had their award ceremony at the, at the music park, that's, that thing is up and going out there, it's kind of a free thing, it's outside the city. We love it, and we attended a fire, primary graduation for Addison Brown and Noah Guernsey, that was another great woman, one of our own sang the national anthem, sang for the back, it was phenomenal, just incredible. I wanted to stand up after that, right, if they was there, want to stand up, say, that's my boy. I saw his wife today, it was very future, did a great job. Then, then, uh, why we did this, I don't know, chief ended up staying for the entertainment for the night, but the eighteen ninety House Museum, I'm live student of P D and fired. Uh, first responders, yeah, the first responders, yeah, so, or a couple thousand dollars was raised there and some interesting stories, and some interesting happen, so that was a, a fun, a fun event to do. Tomorrow, we have the Red Kettle Campaign kickoff breakfast, uh, for the Salvation Army, and as we're talking about retirees insurance, so the first of those sessions is across the hall, it's in the mayor's conference room. Is in personal, in person and virtually using the same.
Same meeting link.
Same meeting link that we use here, and that is tomorrow at ten and at five at night. Thursday, the sixth at ten and five, Tuesday, November eleventh at ten and three. And then virtually only on November fourteenth at one. So again, they're all virtual, so if you can't make it, that'd be recorded, the first one will be recorded, put online, frequently asked questions will be put online as well. So everybody will be able to have those questions and be able to get them, but I think it's very important to get, get ourselves educated.
They're all going to be here.
They're all going to be here. And again, virtually you can go online, if you can't make it, then, uh, you can watch it and there'll be some recording, lots to hear some of the questions and answers to be able to do that as well. The presentation will be there, and we'll put together the frequently asked questions, because I know it's anxiety driven for sure. And, uh, just put, put out the information there so everybody gets it. And then probably the most important part is to vote tonight, right, gentlemen?
That's right. Also.
So, uh, I know you're both first comers and have the anxiety that we've all felt before, that, that season, but I'm sure it's, uh, uh, inter, you know, interesting to do it, but, uh. I think it's, uh, you know, great, great contributions that you've given, so either way, you know, I think we appreciate both of you for sure, you guys come into a difficult situation and jump through it. And, um, and not very well, educating yourself, learning the items that we're dealing with, and we, we all appreciate that for sure.
Right, thank you.
We want to make sure that, uh, that we did that.
That was the story.
That was the story?
No. About Halloween in the eighteen ninety.
What story is here? Oh, I can explain, you can.
You're so old, you should know all the stories.
There's some hair raising experience. Chief is, uh. With that.
I love that.
We'll go into the board reports, Mr. Erger.
I have been campaigning, hitting a lot of doors, I have a lot of notes to go over with a couple of heads this week, but a lot of positive responses, uh. And it makes us to talk to our heads of departments to solve problems.
Great, thank you. Ms. Lane, do you want to report for Ms. Sullivan?
Yeah. The second board has been relatively quiet, I think the weather has been helping. Uh, there was a Z B A meeting, the outcome of which was very disappointing to year-round residents. And a parking lot was improved behind student residence on Upper Clayton. The measure was approved regarding to the impact that parking lot would have on neighbors' profit. Clayton is an R one district, and as such, it would seem that the city's priority would be to protect the character of the neighborhood. So we are hoping that the planning commission does that. In other news, a student walked into a household in the early hours of the morning, and when confronted, went up to the third floor, threw up, and passed out. So luckily, he was not a violent guy, the police and the E M Ts were called, and I believe the family is pressing charges. That is it from the second board. That's it.
How we feel about that story?
I'm reading what the woman said.
But you're a board member.
No, not mine, hers.
Oh, Miss, no, I'm sorry, I was used to your city.
Yeah, yeah, so all quiet in the third board, um, everything seems to be good, going along well, so.
This Tompkins Street. As, um.
One of those mark, do you tell them, we're putting speed bumps right, really? For the loose plate.
But tomorrow, all right, Mike, tomorrow, Wednesday, they're doing the tracks, they're going to, they're going to, you know, take the rubber out, paint right up to, and do a really, like, basically the tracks haven't been used, that'd be a lot.
Even that used.
That's starting tomorrow, we're going to give that help and make that as, this possibly, thanks, Mike, for that, I forgot to bring that up. Now that, now.
Now it's my turn, um, I've gotten a couple of calls, uh, about the health insurance, and I've made sure that people know. When the meetings will be and that they should attend, if, I didn't realize it would be virtual as well, but I will say I can hold of them and let them know. Tompkins Street is going to be very nice. When it's paved, but I, I've heard from a couple of people who are afraid, I mean, there's already speeding on Tompkins. All the time, trucks, cars, motorcycles, everybody, so they're afraid that it's going to be so nice and smooth that it's going to be even worse. So, um, someone suggested. Cameras that can catch speeders, so get on that.
That's not big, yeah.
So I, I will tell that, but I said that I wouldn't change it, I would mention it.
I'm sure we'll increase enforcement there, so it's a good problem to have.
Yeah, yes, no, it's going to be.
You got to keep everybody safe.
It's going to be that. That's it.
Thank you, Ms. Council.
Uh, just one thing, I had heard from a couple of people who had enrolled in the Solar Simplify program, uh, who received a letter indicating the deal was in operation. Oh, yeah. Uh, I haven't had a chance to look at the letter yet, but I was wondering, I was, was hearing that from.
I know they put some people on a waiting list. Because they're waiting for another.
Edition, right, it's going to open, so, um, and I've also heard some concern that they've done that in the past, so, but, but they're, they're, I too am that way.
There were some questions, um, about. The validity of that, when people got the letters, and I tried to assure people that, you know, this representative came and spoke to us and that it was legit, it wasn't scammed, so.
That's all I have.
That's all I have, all right, Mr. Carr.
All quiet in the sixth floor, I did, uh, get a bunch of calls, and obviously I'm a retiree regarding the health insurance, um, very upset. Basically, was, a lot of people were here on council that we've, the mayor's made several statements about it being a fountain barrier, he wasn't opt-in only. That's been brought up several, three or four times, I think, five, eleven, and the retirees go holding till then. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Crackler.
As we say, you know, you pave the roads, they'll come, Pat, you pave the roads, make them nice, they'll come.
Oh, I know.
Just to remind her in the streetlights. They're usable, they weren't here, the, the city owns all the streetlights now, so if anybody, if you get a call, they have a problem with streetlight, you need to reach out, D B W's not. Nashville, really, because he could have a few help, but, uh, love the name of the gentleman, Tucker, so, that'll be against Mike, I went right to the source, it was fixed that afternoon. They have a few phone calls, you know what I mean, so, but other than that, uh, everything seemed to be good, I mean, any calls, health insurance stuff, but, uh, I think. At this point, I think we need to get to the, uh, the seminars that are going to have with the informational stuff, you know. Take the information from there and, uh, we'll decide after that, so.
Well, yeah. Michaels.
Uh, just a couple of things, things, uh, for most part are quiet in, uh, eighth ward. Uh, I did receive a, a letter from, uh, retired, uh, police officer Chuck Niederhauser, I'm not sure if everyone else.
Yes.
Did, uh, it was a very well, well put letter, I've done several red lines with, uh, Mr. Niederhauser, and those events are very memorable, to say the least.
Also, uh, wandered down, uh, to see the trunk and treat, uh, boy, what an event that was. That was probably one of the largest events that we've hosted, uh, in the city in a long time. Very well attended that.
Nice to see you in the Zoom picture, you know.
No.
We should talk and take in five thousand people, and we're never, but you can see the Zoom picture, or thought that twice that, but it was like.
I, I, I'm sure it's going to grow even later next year. And I think that's probably one of the reasons why, uh, besides the weather. And I think that's probably one of the reasons why, besides the weather, that. Prickety tree on Halloween night, my attendance was down. We only had, I counted seventy, seventy-two individuals. And normally we have double that, and some years we triple that, so. I think some of it was probably due to the weather and some of it was trunk or treat. I think a lot of them got, got out of their system early and. Saying not to go out again. Probably your parents had, that's a little. That's all I have for my report, so, so thank you.
All right, thank you. I approve of minutes. Can I get a motion to accept the minutes? To come to that quest. Any questions, resolutions, fractions, follows in favor?
I, I.
Here, agenda item number one, modify the twenty twenty five adopted budget for forty-nine thousand nine hundred and sixty-one dollars to allocate new revenue. And authorize expenditures.
Resolve that the city of Corlent County Council does hereby amend the two thousand twenty-five city budget. In the amount of forty-nine thousand nine hundred and sixty-one dollars is outlined in the accompanying table. Transfers of one hundred dollars from sale of equipment account. To the operating equipment account or to, because of a refund, a whole purchase. Transfer of four thousand seven hundred five dollars to recognize a donation for its purchase of. Fire Department bell and trailer. Transfer of twenty-seven thousand five hundred seventy dollars from a grant reimbursement. Seventeen thousand five hundred eighty-six dollars transferred for. Infrastructure support for plan development. Seventeen thousand five hundred eighty-six dollars for architectural designs and survey costs for. The fire station for a total allocation of forty-nine thousand nine hundred and sixty-one dollars.
May I hear a motion? Mr. Director. Mr. Baker, any questions on that? Can I move it, please?
Councilmember Burger.
I.
Councilmember Pinello. Councilmember Lane.
Hi.
Councilmember Conlon.
I.
Councilmember Carpenter.
I.
Councilmember Backwood.
I.
Councilmember Michaels.
I.
Agenda item number two, authorize agreement with the Corlent and March School District for snow removal and salting services.
Resolve that the city of Corlent County Council hereby authorizes Mayor Steve or his designated. To execute an agreement with the Corlent and March City School District. For the services of the Department of Public Works for the plowing of snow and salting. In and around the district schools and facilities for the two thousand twenty-five, twenty-six school year, according to the REACH schedule theory. Now REACH schedules up with all the wearers.
Make a motion. Just to back with Ms. Lane. Any questions ahead?
Don't be aware of last year's assault shortage, is this? We get into that again, is it, can we change this or it's locked in at that price?
I, I would guess it's locked in, right? At that price, but I think we pretty much negotiated it for the year at that price.
Yeah, the same negotiates it for the year. We can order up to a hundred and fifty percent of both requests and believe it. It's all, that may as well change, unless we use more than a hundred and fifty percent.
I just remember last year, I just.
Yeah, but we, we did okay. We were having, it was, it seemed we did okay last year's.
Sure.
Good point, good point, thank you. Any other?
Yeah, just get one. At, at what point do we get reverse for these services? Once a month? In the spring?
And we build them out as.
As.
As they're used. I mean, we don't know how much snow we're getting, so it kind of depends. It's, I know that's not the best answer, but that's the real answer.
So you would say monthly, I guess.
Roughly.
Whatever you do.
Yeah, I mean, if we have them with where we have no snow or one storm, we might wait, roll in the next one if it's not. No, we try to keep it pretty regular.
Okay, yep. But we're not, I'll wait for a year to get.
No. No, the school's very good for.
Thank you.
And else? Can I move it, please?
Councilmember Burger.
I.
Councilmember Pinello.
I.
Councilmember Lane.
I.
Councilmember Conlon.
I.
Councilmember Carpenter. Councilmember Beckwith. Councilmember Michaels.
I.
Agenda item number three, authorize agreement with Saratoga Associates for design services for random park restrooms renovation and pavilion project. Number two, four, zero, zero, two, five.
Resolve that the city of Corlent County Council hereby authorizes Mayor Steve or his designated to execute an agreement with Saratoga Associates. Landkeep Architects, architects, engineers, and planners out of Editha, New York. In an amount not to exceed seventy-seven thousand one hundred and twenty-five dollars for services that's outlined in accepted response.
I get a motion for this.
One motion.
Mr. Conlon. Mr. Michaels. Yeah, so we, this is part of that grant. Again, they were, they were always better, even if that's where.
So this is a neat to grab. We haven't got the grant yet. Before we had.
We, we had the grant.
Okay.
Yeah. And we have a portion of that. I think it's.
We have a map.
Five, it's five percent. I think that's five, right? It's five or ten.
I have to look at.
Sorry about that. Was this the last thing we should have talked about that we're just doing with grants and stuff?
Right.
Okay, anyone else? Can I move it, please?
Don't want to spend our money on this reversible method.
It is.
Councilmember Burger.
I.
Councilmember Pinello.
I.
Councilmember Lane.
I.
Councilmember Conlon.
I.
Councilmember Carpenter.
I.
Councilmember Beckwith.
I.
Councilmember Michaels.
I.
Agenda item number four, accept and recognize donations to the police department.
Resolve that the city of Corlent County Council on behalf of Mayor Steve and the police department. Expresses its gratitude for the generosity of the donors below. And be a further resolve with the county council hereby accepts the following donations totaling five hundred and sixty-eight dollars to be appropriated to the police department accounts as follows. A one hundred and fifty dollar donation from the police, the police commission. To go towards the shop with the company program. And four hundred and eighteen dollars from the Corlent Bill and Sonic Lodge for seventy to go to the McGraw program.
May I hear a motion? Mr. Carpenter and Ms. Pinello. Any questions? I appreciate these donations and. I think a chicken, you know, the cops last week or two weeks ago. It was nice for donations and. Can I move it, please? That's all right, we're moving on.
You're just getting everybody today, huh?
Councilmember Merker.
I.
Councilmember Pinello.
I.
Councilmember Lane.
I.
Councilmember Conlon.
I.
Councilmember Carpenter.
Good, I.
Councilmember Beckwith.
I.
Councilmember Michaels.
I.
Agenda item number five, reset the recognized donations to the youth bureau.
Resolve that the city of Corlent County Council on behalf of Mayor Steve and the youth bureau expresses its gratitude for the generosity of the donors below. And be a further resolve that the county council hereby accepts the following donations totaling, well, I didn't total that up. I'll do that. Ball to go to the youth bureau donation account for their intended purposes. For the summer camp two thousand twenty-six. Partnership for children and families donated one thousand three hundred and fifty dollars. And to go towards the youth football program, Shady Youth Sports donated one thousand dollars. I won't read the amounts, but I'll read the names of donors who made donations in memory of Rick Jenkey. Anthony Camilli, Michael and Ann Trivisano, Donna Giavennetti, Trey and Stephen Trey. Janice Rivers and Leonard Siegel, John and Margaret Bartley, Martin Garfinkel. Mary Ziganfuss. Jeffrey and Nancy Wheatley, William Depper, Angelo and Julie. Trivisano. Anne and Richard McDonald, Edward and Cynthia Ryan, Michael and Lynn Wild. And Glenn and Carol Clark.
Any other motions? Mr. Conlon, Mr. Beckwood. Yeah, so the nine hundred and thirty dollars is the total, because Jenkey, the total was three thousand two hundred and eighty for all of them, but the. Rick Jenkey was a great, a great guy, and I think we're doing something at the park, well, bench over. By the new blocking path and the first wall there, so. In his honor, so, so very nice to get everybody done to those. Can I move it, please?
Councilmember Merker.
I.
Councilmember Pinello.
I.
Councilmember Lane.
I.
Councilmember Conlon.
I.
Councilmember Carpenter.
I.
Councilmember Beckwith.
I.
Councilmember Michaels.
I.
Okay, so real quick, couple of dates here. So November fourteenth will be our, the final file we proposed twenty twenty-six city budget. December second, we'll have a public hearing that proposed twenty twenty-six budget. At six P M, and then December sixteenth will adopt the final budget. So that's the calendar as, as presented. So the fourteenth will file with proposed budget. Which will happen, what we had proposed, what, that just went through with adjustments. That would be proposed on the fourteenth, and then December second, one public hearing, and then December sixteen. We'll do the final amount thing of that much. Any questions on that?
Real quick, can you just highlight the dates again, please? People missed it the first time, I will. Health insurance.
Yes.
Such in the rounds you're saying.
Again, so tomorrow, the fifth, ten A M, five P M. It'd be on our, our virtual webs, attendee, tennis through our Zoom link. With the I D number nine, two, three, five, six, six, four, seven, zero, zero. That'd be the Zoom link, and they'll all be for all of me, that same Zoom link. So tomorrow's meeting will be virtual and at ten A M and five Thursday. The day after tomorrow at ten A M and five again, November eleventh, following Tuesday at ten and three. And then virtual only. Will be Friday, November fourteenth at one P M. So all those will be virtual, and you'll be able to ask questions, those frequently asked questions, all those, all the questions. Some of them, the same, I'm sure. All those questions will be posted, just as we did for the budget. On the, on our website with video of the slide presentation and the supporting documents for all, for the slide presentation stuff as well, to try to give everybody what they need.
Thank you.
Anything else? All right, that, I'll accept the motion for the chairman.
I.
That's your call.
Linkle. I know you.
Just to back to us, all is favored.
I.
Okay.
We're getting a better look up.
Right, gentlemen?